Got a motion to adjourn the workshop? All right, need a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, perfect. All right, we're gonna move on to our next meeting. The Montego Regional Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. Richard Black.
Here.
Janet Miller Schmidt.
Here.
Ed Provo.
Here.
Dwayne Carmely.
Here.
Peter Beasley. And Marilyn Rodman will not be here. All righty, approval of previous meeting minutes. Everyone had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any additions or corrections? Okay, motion approved. I got a second discussion, any additions or corrections? All right, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Staff and community reports. Anya or Earl, it's up to you.
I don't have any that have been approved yet. I had one come in, but I haven't gone to revise version.
It's all you, Earl.
I've got a couple things.
Okay.
This is really a for your information type thing. I had a phone call and an email from a gentleman that was interested in buying Fairholme, which comes up for auction.
Ask him.
Ask him to be here. He may be. Marshall?
Was it Marshall Graves?
Okay.
Was it Marshall Graves?
No, it's Marshall Bridge. He was one of the people that was interested in it. And he had some questions for me as far as if he buys it. You know, make sure he can tell you what the advertisement said, what you could do. I've got the advertisement here too, don't have one copy, but y'all can pass it around. All right, here's his email. We're looking at persons that probably want to confirm that it would be allowed to the types of activities we develop. On partial, I'm gonna say Phase 1 and Phase 2. The original phase is the one closest to Montego. There is two tracks there. That's the first track, that's the original track. He said there are currently sixteen homes on the property and we would intend to upgrade these homes as short-term rentals, renting them out nightly to fit. There's also one space for an RV camper. We would intend to rent this out nightly as well. And then it goes to the other part, which says there are seven apartments that we would plan to rent out, short-term rentals, and then there is no big space. Or the kitchen, a stage with a sound system that holds up to two hundred people. We would use the space to go to weddings, family events, blah, blah, blah. Or the kitchen, prepare food. Can you please help me confirm that these activities would be allowed and permitted at these locations? Well, everything there looks good to me, but it said seven apartments. Hmm, I remember when those were built and I inspected those and those were retail shops. There was hot dog place, there was an ice cream place, somebody made candles somewhere. I mean, you know, it's all. And now I'm seeing that there's people living there. In the terms of the state of Tennessee's codes, those are, that is their definition of a townhouse, where you have three or more units under the same roof. Requires kitchens with separating walls, be at least two hour fire rates all the way to the deck, and there are certain other stipulations and other work. These homes, they were changed from retail shops to living spaces with no building permit and no inspections. So, I have, and when I found this out, I called the occupancy and I talked to a gentleman that was handling the project. And I put this letter together and emailed it to him. And he told me, you know, number one, it's not a tiny home community. It's never been a tiny home community. And of course, that's just for their, I'm sure it makes a big deal for sales. If you call it a tiny home community, I mean, everybody go, "Great, we want it, we want it bad." And he says, "Well, no, there aren't any tiny homes there, but we just kinda use that to help us along in the sale." I said, "Well, I just want you to know in my letter that it is not a tiny home community, number one. Number two, those seven apartments that they're calling about, if those had been turned into living spaces, then I've got to get in the middle of this and move everybody out. And you're gonna have to bring them up code before you can move anybody back in." And anyway, that's, I just wanna make y'all aware of that.
So has he got back with you at all?
Has he what?
Has he gotten back with you?
Well, he did thank me for telling him that. And I hope whoever else bids on it knows it too, but I don't know if they do or not. But I'm just putting y'all, just gonna tell FYI.
What do you classify that, to those little trailers, then?
Those are okay.
But it's not a, it's a-
They're not tiny homes.
They're not tiny homes. What are they called?
They're a mobile home with a sticker on it that has been approved by the state of Tennessee we live in.
Right.
They're small. So, anyway, just wanted y'all to be on board.
So if someone buys this, they would have to come before us?
If they wasn't in?
If someone buys it, the whole kit and caboodle, they would have to, and if they wanted to do what that advertisement says?
Come before y'all?
Yeah.
No. That's what they're in, they've been in business there for years. They don't have to do anything.
So this is all-
But you've got to dress-
But what I've gotta do is go in and tell this new owner, he's got to move everybody out. Or get me a letter from the Tennessee License and Engineer with its stamp on it that says these homes have been designed to be lived in, one or the other.
So you couldn't issue him an occupancy permit or anything?
No way.
Yeah.
If one of those kitchens on fire, they're all little birds and if people in there, you know, if you lose one life, is it worth dodging something? No, I'm not. So I just want y'all to be aware of that.
It doesn't look to me like they'd be able to go ahead with the auction then.
Well, I sent it, I sent the guy that's doing it for waiting, I sent him the same email. I copied, copied you and a copy of the mayor's, copied your lawyer's, copied yours. Had a dog in the fight, that's what I say.
So that would not be grandfathered in?
Oh my gosh, no. It's dangerous. I mean, it's just, it's a fire hazard, huge.
So when they originally were built, you were not the inspector to-
I was the inspector when they were built, but they were built for retail shops.
I gotcha. I just wanted to make sure I got all the information.
I mean, they were roughly built even within, you know, the walls between there were made out of wood. I mean, it would just, to look like a, you know, barn or whatever you wanna call it. Yes, very rustic. So there you have that. Now, the other thing I wanna talk to y'all about is Cindy, oh, there, yes, all right. I got a call also this week. One of our long-term, long-time, used to be, back in, citizens. She bought, she bought a house, and it was, if anybody can remember, it was Ray's-
Summer's. I didn't buy it, Earl.
Do what?
It was left to me.
Oh, okay. Well, great. Either way, you still are. And she called me and she said, "Earl, Ray had this train, had his old building outside of the back of there that he kept trains in." He wasn't a train hog, obviously, that's what he loved doing. And he had a, what is it, about thirteen, forty or something like that? Narrow, narrow.
It's twelve.
Twelve before, okay. And he kept trains in it. And I guess when he passed on and Cindy acquired the property, she told me, "I have, I've turned it into a living space and I wanna rent it out." And I said, "Oh my God." Oh, Lord. Number one, you didn't get a building permit.
I didn't build anything.
I'm sorry?
I didn't build anything.
Well, you did think you built it out. Did you put a toilet in it?
I didn't.
Okay. Good enough. Need a building permit. And I said, "Well, that's problem number one, you know, since it's all been done and I can't see it, you're gonna have to get an engineer to give me a letter." And I said, "Your other problem is, at this particular point in time, Montego doesn't allow two principal structures on the same lot, which you guys have been debating here tonight." So, I told her she couldn't. I had to be the goat, and I got to say she can't do it. I asked her to come tonight, mainly, I guess, I want y'all to be goats too.
I were used to it.
So I wanna, I wanna bring y'all up to that. If you've got any questions for her, I'm sure you'd be glad to answer them, but in my opinion, it is violation of, existing violation now of zoning ordinance, and I say it can't be done.
Cindy, you have anything to say? You wanna talk about it?
Well, obviously, I'd like to talk about it because as I told Earl and Davy and Joe Ryan, I asked some questions of them. I had no knowledge you had to do this until they, of course, I've lived away from here for a while, and when I felt, I was told by some of, some of the other people who have these places that I had to get an occupancy license. That's when I saw city and/or, I mean, county and/or city license. So that's when I called Dick. And anyway, what we've done on the building is maintenance, like I said, it's been there for probably almost as long as I've been around, and maybe not that long, anyway, but it, we have done some maintenance on it, we've done some painting, we've done that kind of thing. But I had no idea that we needed to do this. It is not too pri, my concern, it's not too primary residency. There will only be somebody there if I can, could rent it, maybe over a week, over the weekend. It's not like they're gonna be there all the time, I wouldn't want that anyway. Now, we can squabble over words if you want to, but that's, that's pretty much it. The kitchen is not equipped with, you know, stove, refriger, it does have efficiency kitchen, there's no washer dryer, there's nothing like that. But it does have toilet and a walk-in shower, it's handicapped, accessible. As far as I'm concerned, all I did was, was get it, make it more, I mean, it looks a whole lot better than years ago when it was a train house, it was nice, but it ended up being just a storage building. So, that's, that's pretty much it. I would like to be able to rent it if I could, but I know I've got stuff, according to Earl, that I need to do, to do that, and I didn't know it.
Yeah, and we've been talking about accessory dwelling units. It seems so dry, doesn't it? For a long time, and we haven't made any decisions yet to pass it on to the city council. So that's something that we have to talk about. So Earl's right. I mean, not unfortunately, it just, it is what it is, right? Dean?
We're being on behalf of my friends here. You have these all over the city limits. You've got them everywhere. I can name three or four just off the top of my head, and they're rentals. And I know they're illegal, but you can't selectively enforce these things.
I totally agree.
And you can have one and you've got them all in the city limits and they've been, there's never been anything said about them.
Well, I tell you what, why don't you just make a list and bring up that list?
I'm not the city rat.
And we'll see that they're looked at.
I, that's not, I mean-
Make a list.
That's not my job.
Name them all and we'll write them down up here, you won't have to write anything.
Well, enforcement officer can ride around downtown and find two or three from here to exit 134.
Well, it'd be so much easier if you just, I mean, you just-
You know, then everybody's job would be easier.
Every time, if something like this comes up, everybody else's duty, but you never know who they are.
I agree with you. There's got to be, you've got to have a correction policy, but it's awfully hard if you're the property owner, and, and, and you're gonna be the first to say you're, you know, from now on, we're not going to do these things, and you've got, if there's fifteen or twenty other things, it's kinda, kinda unfair protection for the people that's there and non-conforming.
I don't, I don't disagree, but we knew the worst. I'm not gonna be the guy.
No, you should. It's not that.
Travis will be the guy. I'm, I'm retired.
That's not on you.
Well, I don't care. But, yeah, they've always, they, anytime, I mean, it's always, I hear the same thing all the time, well, someone told you doing it, they're doing it over there, why can't you do it over there, why can't I do it? But I never, I never found out who over there is.
Well, if you go back, and I don't say you should go back and look to minutes, but the city councils before have passed a couple over the years of this-
Well, if they have, I mean, that's a variance. They have to apply for a variance.
Well, they've been applying for a variance, they applied for a business license. On one, on one of them, I know, and they gave them, granted them a business license for the accessory use, and it wasn't in a house.
Well, I don't know about that.
This is gonna be addressed. We've already talked about a workshop earlier, we're gonna have for the next meeting to talk about this. I think there's some positive conversation we have about looking at this very aggressively. I know you're sitting there and have already built it out, but-
It's been a while, but man.
And Earl is still gonna have to get it approved for occupancy before you can do it anyway.
Well, I know there's been a mention, I mean, if y'all are even thinking about it, I hope you are, about a licensed engineer. I have no idea who that is and who he would use before.
Well, I mean, I mean, you-
Well, not there yet.
No, and I'm stuck, oh, you don't want to spend that money until you can look it ironed out to make sure that, that you can have, and you're-
You can give us up into the next thirty days, we should, we'll have our workshop, two weeks plus a day or whatever it's gonna take to advertise or be able to offer our workshop.
That's, that's how long it has to be out, yeah.
It'll work, okay. We have to schedule a meeting for mid-September.
Mid-September?
Because I'm not gonna be here in early September. Okay, okay.
But we could have the workshop as a separate to the next meeting.
A separate to, what do you mean? We can have it longer.
Have it in separate for two weeks? Because I don't think we wanna limit thirty minutes.
No, but we can have it longer before the next meeting.
Well, and the city council meeting, because ours is just a recommendation either way, so it would have to go to the city council and be ready to be presented.
And then they'd, they have two readings.
And then there's two readings and all that, so. I don't see why not. And I'm truly sorry. I know anywhere, even opening a business or anything, there's every, every municipality, every county, every state has a different idea of what something is, so I'm so sorry. It's just that's our, currently, that's our law.
Well, you've got a shot at it. I mean, seriously, I mean, if there's-
Yeah, we're moving in that, I mean, it's on the agenda.
Maybe four months, you might be able to, maybe illegal thing, but still, you'd have to have lots of engineers to make sure everybody could.
I have a question about process. I wanna, you usurp, usurp you guys' authority, but is there a reason, so we need two, we need two city council meetings and a public hearing, right?
Correct.
To do this? Is there, do we need a formal recommendation for an ordinance by the planning commission for the council to take up the issue?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I-
I assume we would have to give the recommendation based on how we want it structured, and just like they did here.
Because I know that, I know that the zoning person came to us after y'all denied it, but he has to go through here to get to there.
Typically.
That's right.
But I'll still ask the question, why can't we meet before the next meeting?
It depends on my schedule. I have to check. It's not a lot of time for me to prepare.
We have to advertise for two weeks and one day, for fifteen days.
Yes.
And then if we could have it, can we have it combined with the town council members too, so that everybody's on the same, looking at the same information at the same time?
Yeah, but you're talking about in August, this month. We just have to talk about it after the meeting, or, we can still do it during the meeting, but at the end, so we can look at each other's schedules.
Okay.
Because I'm, yeah, I have a busy month.
Can I ask Earl one question? Is an architect, licensed architect also eligible to do the investigation?
Well, what it says is Tennessee Licensed Engineer.
Tennessee Architect or Engineer?
I don't think it says Architect, but I'll be glad to look. I mean, you might be the guy. I think you did do one for me out there in Cooley's Rib.
I think architects can do that.
Well, let me find them out.
So we can do everything we can do.
Well, it's got that stamp without liability on it.
Yeah. Earl, anything else?
That's it.
That's all exciting.
I'm yours.
Okay, thank you, Earl. And I, you said nothing?
All right, old business, we have none. We're gonna, we're gonna move on to new business. And we're not gonna do the workshops. Are we gonna do the workshop stuff? We're gonna move that over?
So what, can we talk about what exactly you want to discuss in the workshop? How do you want it to be structured?
It was a workshop issue because I wanted to hear the opinions of the commissioners. It was not necessarily to throw out the public. I've been here one year now, and these are two issues that-
Oh, sorry, we're still talking about ADUs.
Okay.
Yes. So what exactly do you want to be? If you wanna have a workshop for ADUs, how do you want it organized? Maybe we can use this time to figure out how best to prepare for that.
Well, I mean, you've done a lot of the light work with Jasper, I think that's a good start, and Chattanooga, I think that's a good start, and really honestly, for me, and I, you know, everyone had their opinion, I think it's a city council issue as far as approving it, and, and it needs to decide what their will is, right? I mean, it's-
Yes, but, but you guys create the ordinance to recommend to town council.
I know.
So, so everything that, I guess, what you have- They can change it. They can, they can adopt it if they don't agree completely with every single element of it, but this is where it starts.
So you're, so you've already suggested to us, Anja, that we go home and we read this word line by line, and we should look at both Chattanooga and Jasper one, particularly the Jasper one. And then if there's things that we have questions about, we should give them to you in advance of the workshop?
That would be preferable, yeah.
Okay, so that you can do your homework.
Yes.
Then we could come together and then we would discuss it again, because we cannot discuss it among ourselves.
The hope would be that you, that we, I wish we could discuss it right now so that I could put together an ordinance to bring to you next month to recommend.
I haven't read the Jasper one.
Okay.
And also Jasper is a different flavor than Montego. Is there a vacation community that does them well? Gatlinburg, I don't wanna be a Gatlinburg, but is there another community in Tennessee that does it well?
I mean, Decatur, South Pitt, and Jasper have all passed ADU ordinances in the past couple months that are very similar to one another. And the reason why I thought Jasper's fit in so well is because based on these town hall meetings that I've been attending, it seems that Montego is trying to advertise itself as a gateway to the Cumberland Plateau. You guys want to encourage tourism. It seems like a great opportunity for mixed housing and an opportunity for residents to have passive income, or having family residents live on the property too.
And then the survey we sent out, there's a definite, we don't want tiny homes in-
But this isn't a tiny home.
I know that.
It's not a tiny home community.
I'm just saying that this would eliminate some of the need for tiny homes, possibly.
Yeah, I mean-
I'm not saying it's tiny homes or anything, but I'm just saying it gives us some rentals that the tiny homes were supposed to be.
Yes, in that way, yes.
We need to have a workshop.
Right, but I need to know-
Put all the cards over the table.
It's easy to say we wanna have a workshop, but we need to talk about what we're gonna discuss out of the workshop, and I wanna be able to-
We'll send, we'll send you questions, whether they're-
Okay, but again, my want is that I can put together an ordinance to present to you at the next meeting to recommend to town council. Then town council can do whatever they want with it. They can change it.
We're gonna send you well in advance.
Yep. But I still need to be able to create the ordinance, so now this is pushing it back to more meetings, because if we just discuss it at the next meeting, then I have to bring an ordinance to the following meeting.
Why don't you bring a model ordinance to the workshop?
For Montego specifically? It would be based on my own opinions. I mean, I don't really wanna do that. I brought Jasper's because it was similar to what we've been talking about in the past.
I like Jasper's.
You could create one that Montego modeled on Jasper for discussion at the workshop.
Right. And, and you could recommend it subject to whatever changes you want to include, so whatever questions you have, I can include that, it can be a discussion, but not within, not between all the commissioners, but with, between each commissioner and me if you guys have concerns or recommendations.
Earl, what'd you think about Jasper? Did you say you liked it?
Yeah, there's, there's one part of it that I do, I do not, I'm not really happy with. And, and my idea on this is keeping the cost down as much as possible for, to everyone to do it. And that, that part of that, like, I don't have it with me. You may have it right there. It's the part where it says you have to have a drawing, you know, in your house, and-
Yeah.
And this, this is only, well, your house, and then, and you, and y'all, there's two different things. There's a detached, detached ADU, and also there's an attached ADU, you just add on to the house, you know. Anyway, it's a, it's a part of it that says you have to have a drawing showing, you know, that the new part looks like the old part. And who's gonna have to do that?
It's in the design area.
Somebody that's going to charge you a bunch of money.
Well, I don't think so. I think that you could make it a simple sketch plan. I think the PC probably would, the PC of Jasper just wants to see where that house is located on the lot, what percentage, lot coverage it is, where's the driveway, where's the parking? It doesn't, you don't need to pay for a survey or a site plan to be done.
We're not having signage and all that.
No.
The application shall require architectural drawings and a dimensional floor plan showing cooking, path, and living areas. The drawing must show the inside and the outside of the-
For, like, as a building inspector inspection, isn't that the same thing you have to be done?
That's what we're talking about in the workshop.
Yeah, I wouldn't-
We'll beat this horse to death.
Typically require-
And we're not prepared to talk about it.
Architecturally drawn floor plan for anything, unless it's multi-planary or something dealing with, you know.
All right, while we're here, and we've got an audience, anybody have anything to say about it?
I got a question.
Go for it.
Why is Rush trying to push this thing through? I mean, if you have to have additional meetings and workshop, what's the problem with that?
We've been talking about it for a pretty good while.
We've been kicking the can down the road.
It came up several, several months ago, and we've been kicking the can out.
I've been also getting a lot more requests recently, and it's, it's becoming more-
Actually have been heard it to different things.
Yeah. Our workshop, I think, was November.
I thought it was, yeah.
Long time ago. All right, come on, what, what do we feel about it? Anybody? What do you feel?
We're with Cooley's Rib, and our second amendment allows guest homes on the same lot as a primary structure. So we know our ALRC is in conflict, if they approve that, with the city codes. So we just need to know where we stand.
Today.
Today. And I think we do, based on conversations with Anya and Earl, but, you know, I'm hearing a lot of this, and we need to know what to tell our membership.
Well, municipal supersedes HOA.
Right.
So, right now, we're in a gray area of either moving, moving some direction, because it's been, we've been kicking it down, down the road. So the answer today is not a yes or a no.
So if you got pre-existing non-conforming?
Yeah, non-conforming, there are non-conforming units that exist. They are not in, I mean, unless Montego decides to enforce that, that's not the jurisdiction of the PC. That's not what we're discussing today, we're just discussing additional units.
Yeah, I'd prefer not to say anything more than-
Tell Dean, and Dean will tell-
I think he's-
It just puts, it's the indecision, we gotta make the decision.
I'll say, as an elected official, if your HOA were to pass that amendment allowing them, that might be a clue to us that there's some support, that there's some support for it.
Right, it was recorded in both counties in 2017.
So that's helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I, everybody's got the stuff.
So 2017, but now you've got to have it. So it's the same situation with us. I mean, it's hitting critical mass, and we have to make a decision. There's a lot of people that don't want it, right? So you have to take the needs of all the citizens, and that's what the city council is for.
Right, no, I get it.
Right, I mean, we're all trying to be good neighbors.
Pam, Cooley's Rift.
Hey, Pam.
So you said it's a gray area. It's not a gray area today. Right now, this moment, it's not a gray area. It's black and white.
Well, it is black and white.
Right, so if the ALRC was to make a decision today on a request, it would have to follow Montego guidelines.
Right, we have to change our codes.
Or, right.
Yeah, we have to change our codes to allow it...
It's not gray right now.
Well, it's gray in that we don't know which direction we're gonna go in. That's the gray area.
Right.
So we don't know.
Right.
It's not a no.
It is today.
It isn't.
Well...
Today, so somebody said it...
So we cannot approve, if somebody comes to us and requests permission to build a...
Well, it's a no.
...city home on their...
That's correct, that's a no.
We have to tell them no until you make the decision.
It's not in our codes, correct? That is correct.
But we can also tell them, go to the city council, go to the planning commission, discuss it with them. But as of today, Cooley's Rift cannot approve that.
Yeah, laws don't change overnight, but we have, there's a will there to address the issue. So that's positive.
Yes.
So does, any other discussion on that?
I didn't get to read any of the Jasper ordinance, but is there a land size requirement? What is it currently in? For the principal dwelling and accessory dwelling shall not exceed thirty percent of the total lot area. Okay, and there's no minimum lot area? No, not the way it's written in the Jasper. Okay.
But there is, we have said that.
Yeah, we have said that.
The zoning would be a lot...
And after you're...
Coming out.
...to their yard, and you can't exceed thirty percent of the coverage of the lot. So it's sort of set.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I wanna go back to what we were talking about before about, you were saying the design. I am confused as to why someone would have, you think someone would have to pay a lot of money. I'm just wondering where...
Well, it says architectural.
Yeah, architectural, similar in architectural design.
Okay. Doesn't that sound like an architect would have to do it?
No, in my mind, that means they would have to probably bring an image of the house they're creating.
So we can use a hand sketch?
Yes, I would...
Well, we don't know what we can use yet because we don't, we don't have it yet.
Right, but I assume you don't have it.
It says an architectural drawing, but it doesn't say a stamped architectural drawing. So it could be somebody, if you had a skill set, pull that together with your graphics.
Or if your house is made out of...
But that people are limited in that case.
If the house is made out of brick, then I assume that means you want the same kind of feeling. You don't wanna odd-looking accessory dwelling unit, the top pink, next to your house.
And it was interior and exterior.
Yeah, so it's exterior, exterior.
Yes.
I believe anywhere, architect or engineers have indicated it has to be regular, not a stamp. But address...
Okay.
And that's, okay, that's how detailed, I guess, it will be in our workshop.
Okay.
Anybody else have a comment on ADU before we move on? ADU. Richard?
Yeah.
Commissioners? When we ready to move on, you wanna talk about a little bit more?
I remember talking about getting that more or less a blueprint for a house.
We're gonna talk about that.
Right, there are a lot of issues we need to address.
Yeah, we got a lot to talk about. We're not gonna beat it up tonight.
Yeah.
No.
But we'll move ahead.
Okay. Commissioners, we good for moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? And I'm sorry, I know y'all passed that, and I wish it was...
No, we're just wanting...
You've answered our question.
Yes, and we just wanted to know how to proceed forward. So, yes, you're very good.
Okay, all right, good. I just wanna make sure, I mean, we're all in this together, right? We're just trying to figure it out.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, we're gonna move on to hearing the persons having business before the commission. So this is just on any topic, and I know Dean is...
Well, we have to add, we didn't cover his workshop.
I think it should be scheduled at a workshop personally. It was, as I was saying, it is a conversation of ours and a ugly, to address a couple of issues that keep coming up repeatedly, and how we wanna address them as we move ahead.
I think, I mean, I think it would be appropriate to address them now rather than at the next workshop. Since the next workshop, we should dedicate to ADUs only.
What do you choose to do there, Eric?
You know what, Ed, I wanna leave that to you.
Thank you. I'm glad to talk about it now, and we'll keep it brief.
Okay.
You want me to take lead on it?
Yeah, you can express what your concerns are, and then I can express what my planning team has talked about.
And we can get feedback from the public too. There were two issues that I continually see coming up now, and as I said, I've only been here twelve months. I'm somewhat of a rookie. But one of them is site plans. We continue to ask for site plans, and as Earl has mentioned, these are getting very expensive. It's easy to drop ten grand in a site plan, no problem at all. Is there some type of method or mythology that we can take up where, as Dean has done in the past, come up and have open discussion without a site plan and get some kind of approval to move forward before someone invests that much money, not knowing if it's gonna fly or not with this commission? It's discussion points. I just wanna hear other people's opinion on it. You wanna start, Richard, come this way.
It makes sense. I mean, chicken and the egg, and putting both up front. It would make sense that there would be conversation about this, what I wanna do. Give me some direction, tell me what I need to do.
Give them input on how to proceed or the fact that it probably won't fly, and they don't waste the money.
So what if we have a questionnaire for them in particular that they could get offline, and then they could bring it to us with specific questions like, how large is your lot? What is it, what kind of business is it? Those specific kind of things, just a general...
I don't think they need to send it to us. They need to send it to Anya, and she puts it in the package.
Well, that's what I mean.
I think the body needs to come here and explain what they want, what they want to do.
I agree, I agree, but I was thinking if we have a questionnaire that they fill out, they send it to Anya, Anya presents it to us. I skipped that section because I figured it's...
Whatever mode you wanna do, that's fine.
And then they come and they explain it. That way they haven't really any cost invested at that point.
Is there a particular situation that brought this up to you? Because to me, it already is happening.
It is happening.
As in, I have about a...
As I said, Dean makes this approach, and it makes sense at times.
Wait, say that one more time.
Dean has taken this approach before. He gets up, he talks about it prior, before he has any kind of plan to see how it's gonna move.
Sure, yeah.
But I don't think the public as a whole has the, we're at all that Dean has and the knowledge of how this works, that they understand that.
I mean, most developers and architects that do send me a site plan have been in contact with me before I get the site plan.
With you.
Yes, and most people that send me site plans know of this process. I don't really think that we need to overcomplicate it by including a questionnaire. I think you could, I mean, a pre-application meeting is encouraged with me. I don't think it needs to go before the PC, before the site plan is ready.
Well, that's what I'm asking, why not? Why don't you think the planning commission should have an open discussion with somebody before they go to the expense of the site plan?
I mean, I feel like that's why you hired our organization to review these site plans before it comes to you. I mean, it just, we already covered...
They still do that. They got blessing and plan, and they still have to put that site plan together and submit it.
Which happens, right. And honestly, I, you were complaining about the cost.
We're user-friendly at times. We have a lot of pushback about that, and I understand why.
Me personally, if I'm looking at a site plan, I don't know what I'm looking at where somebody's standing there telling me what it is anyway.
Right.
So I'm okay with not having the site plan run off.
The first person typically that's called is me. And then their question's gonna be, I wanna do this on this certain property. And I'll tell them, well, you know, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, there's only an order, there's only a bridge. That could be done. Here's, you need to call Anya, and you and her get together on putting the site plan together.
That's how I do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's how...
It's just an open discussion. I wanna hear everybody's opinion on it.
So that's the process.
That's the process, and we've been used.
I don't think, I think the process works well, and that's why I asked if there was a certain situation that came up that made you think to wanna change it.
As an old engineer and old contractor, I just don't like spending money if I'm likely throwing it down a hole. And I think that that can be approached.
So Ed and I and others had said on this codes committee where we've been looking at all the ordinances, and, you know, we had talked about it in terms of existing businesses, that we don't currently require anything of existing businesses, and if we required a site plan from them, that would be too much.
Yeah.
So I was actually reading in our zoning ordinance, and we allow for something called a site sketch, which does not require an architect and can be administratively approved in residential zones.
Yeah.
And so a thought that I had when I was reading that is if we're having a concern about existing businesses that don't necessarily comply with the parking sign and landscape ordinance, and we don't wanna require a site plan, a site sketch might be, for existing structures, might be a sort of an intermediate step to do that. That's where my understanding of you and I's conversation about the excessive cost came in. That we didn't want, we wanted to see compliance with the new businesses coming in, but we didn't wanna require a site plan.
Right, and we talked about...
That's a little bit different.
New construction additions, renovations, do they all require the same site?
No, so residential, right now, currently only request is a site sketch, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, the schedule residential. But now, let me tell you folks, I think you'd be in deep trouble if you get away from an architectural, I mean, a site plan that's professionally done. Because, you know, I used to be the one who could put up on paper sack.
Right.
And I've got, I'm not... I'd carry around a standard pocket, you know. And then, yeah, the planning commission then required, you know, them to be developed by Tennessee law and survey.
Right.
And it costs some money, but, you know, there's reliability there too.
We wanna hear this discussion.
He puts those lot lines and stuff on there, you know, you wanna make sure they're right. And I'm not sure that the register of deeds, whoever they register that stuff with, will do it unless it's a registered, uh, state, so I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
So, kind of, I'm sorry.
Do what, go ahead.
What are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. I've been done.
I'm sorry. A sort of offshoot of this conversation is something I wanted to bring up with the PC, which is that in the past year or so that I've been looking at your site plan, something that Chattanooga has is they actually have a fee, a site plan review fee. And so the, I don't know if you remember the site plan that I sent you guys. I sent like eight reviews back and forth with architects. And in Chattanooga, that would not fly. They, the free, I would recommend maybe the first review be free and then charge fifty, hundred, and then exponentially charge more because it's, I'm spending a lot of time on these site plan reviews when there's other issues that I could be working on, and I feel like a lot of the reviews, it's the same feedback I'm sending back to these developers and architects. It's just spending so much time when I clearly stated what is missing in it. And the issue was really that they couldn't find a surveyor in that month to do the, to do what they needed to do. But it was so much back and forth. They wanted me to relax on the rules, and that wasn't something that I could do.
I mean, what I need, I need to hear this open discussion on these. And we'll move on to that second topic. Had to do with, now you heard this at the council, the fact that we come upon zoning issues, errors, omissions, and overlaps, and we kinda scratch our head and throw them over on the floor and move on. We don't address them, and they keep, they're gonna keep coming back to them. Is there some type of mechanism where, when we identify one of these issues, we can put it in an accident hiding tract where it goes and it gets addressed, and it keeps recirculating on the agenda until it is addressed so that we solve some of these? And this is just discussion now, because this is something I've scratched my head about. How do we do that?
You could direct staff, me, to put it on the agenda for the next. And you, I mean, again, is there a particular one that comes to mind? Because I do remember some things being brought up at meetings by developers, but then the developer never reaches out to me, and it never gets brought up again. So do I need to dive down that rabbit hole if I'm not getting an actual request from a developer about the situation?
I think it needs to come from either the council, the Board of Zoning Appeal, or the planning commission, even though you're that way personally, but that's...
I mean, we get requests for zoning ordinance changes and zoning map changes, and that's when I go through and develop a staff review and bring it to you. But sometimes things get brought up and never...
Resolved.
Well, never brought up again.
Yeah.
It might just be an idea or, I don't know, is there a particular thing that you're thinking of that hasn't been brought up?
There were many, many of them, weren't there?
Why don't we send that list, why don't we send that list to the, to Anya to give to the council? Because it's really not a planning commission issue.
Okay.
I mean, we can't change it if we wanted to, so...
No, but I think we stumble on them all the time.
You do.
Your VZA does too. And that's when we need to hand them all.
We can start with ones that we came up with, that committee, and pass those down, and what about some of those?
It was...
We got a bucket of them.
But I will also say like this, the zoning ordinance has changed, is supposed to be an adaptable document. I mean...
Always change.
Exactly, so, I mean, we need to keep that in mind, that even if we implement something now, we might wanna change it again depending on what the town wants, what you guys want, so...
Well, we did that other, we did that last meeting with the campground, where we went in and changed, recommended them to change the ordinance for the camp, adding the campgrounds, and I think y'all read it once, I know, so, so I think we've done some of it.
We had a deep discussion about the size of tiny homes, you know, but it just kinda got kicked down the road, as you said, so... I, just open discussion about the best way to address these things, not that I have a dog in this fight particularly.
Well, I think I understood from Earl today that we can initiate those changes. They need to come as recommendations from y'all. So I would welcome a conversation about tiny homes, but they gotta be a recommendation from the planning commission, so y'all have to take action.
And certain methodology to do that. Okay, thank you, that's all.
I wanna respond to a question made about site plans. You have a city engineer, don't you, a town engineer?
Do we here in Montego?
Yeah.
It depends on the term engineer. I don't know what case of...
It's on an as-needed basis, providing...
But you don't retainers. You know, it depends, you know, an engineer can make a judgment that you might not want to make to the citizen, that would be a protection for the town, the citizens of Montego from losses. An engineer might look at a, a site plan, preliminary site plan, and this is fine for, you can proceed it. I don't really, we may or may not need a final site plan that needs to be approved by a TAC and all that sort of stuff. Depends on the extent and the potential risks, okay? Your committee really is putting yourself out at a little bit of a risk to take on that responsibility and to say, all I need is a sketch. But you may be making decisions based on a sketch.
The idea is not that we throw away the site plan. The idea is that we give some type of agreement to move ahead to that next step.
That could be a preliminary, you could probably approve a preliminary...
No, we definitely need to stay at a site plan for final approval. But just a preliminary, if you wanna get up and talk about a commercial project that you wanna do, and you wanna ask questions of us before you proceed to make the stage, is, and all I'm saying, is there a way to do that? Do we have the ability to do that?
I mean, like Earl said, they reach out to Earl first, and then they go to me.
Potentially, they'll reach out to the tax assistant first and find their proper zoning to do what they want to do. And then they could come to the planning commission, then propose the business idea. If they have the proper zoning, if the, if the planning commission likes it, then they could hold a public hearing or bring it up in the meeting, have an open discussion, and see what the public thinks about what's gonna be good on this property. And if they voted for it that night, to go ahead and move forward, then you could ask for a site plan before you actually give a final approval. We have a lot of people that come in and don't know whether they have the proper zoning or not.
Right, but there is a way...
And then throw out their site plan, it gets approved, it has to be altered several times.
It doesn't have to do with zoning. You, I mean, if I got a site plan, I bought a business that was in the incorrect zoning, that's where I would end there, but they, that doesn't happen.
But if you wanna build a C3 property on a R1 property, you're gonna make sure you have to be able to do it.
Right, but I haven't run into that issue.
You haven't been there long enough.
I don't, I mean...
It'll make your job easier for someone to access our zoning maps too, and they can't.
No, they have to request it through me.
Yeah, anybody calls, they have to email it.
Well, they have to call and ask you, and they can't just go on the city website and say, oh, well...
Well, we...
No, I think there's some...
Because to Ed's point right now, if you go to the county, the county search office, there's going to be a lot of properties that do not match with the city, the Mont Eagle's property.
I agree, and that was one of our main issues, that the zoning map needs to be perfected.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right.
I got a near full one, one more.
I want you to have it, yes, you are, are you done, Ed?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you bring up anything you want. All right, we're going to move on to hearing the persons having business before the commission, Dean, you're first.
Hi. I did just have one thing, which is to tell the product, the things I want to do for the record, I'd like to-
You're bringing a list of non-conforming uses.
Maybe it's going to be what that list we've been looking for.
Yeah, uh, maybe. Uh, the first thing I would say is, is what Anya said about reviews, uh, from her side, I can understand. But, but I would urge that you not adopt additional fees, even though there's not one for review. But i- if I'm, if I'm going to do a project here in Mont Eagle, I'm going to get fee'd on down the road after I get past her. And, and, and there's been talk about, oh, we're going to do, uh, impact fees, and we're going to do, you know, other things, and, and, and your building permit system, uh, you, you jack that up, and let's say you, you're the one on the city council, uh, so-
I see big icons, I guess.
So, you know, uh, and you brought those in line with, with other places, uh, and, and, and then, there's just a lot of cost with the engineers, with, with, with architects, and, and, uh, it's hard for a small town, for small projects, to be able to get off the ground. And, and, uh, another, I think, something that, uh, I, I read in your regulations, uh, on the, uh, landscape part, I think it said somewhere in there, uh, that you will spend a minimum of ten thousand dollars or ten percent of a project cost, whichever is greater. Now, if, if in fact I read that out of your regulations, that is ridiculous in some cases. Now, if I'm building, well, in, in many cases, if I'm building a ten million dollar project, you want me to, I should have to spend ten percent on landscape? If that makes sense to you. Right, and, 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 uh, I, I didn't look that up and bring it to, to show you where it is, but I read, that's a lot of that stuff. But anyway, back on, on, on the fee thing, review, there's got to be a balance there, uh, and, and then what you were talking about, the input, uh, I think the prob, biggest problem is the average citizen in the town of Mont Eagle does not know the process, just like Cindy Church.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, it is the rule, uh, you guys know that, I know that, but Cindy didn't know that. And, and, and so, I don't know how you get that, uh, to the citizenry, that, that before you do anything with your property, you should call somebody. And then it comes back to my head, said, who do you call? Now, we know if we're going to dig, we call eight one one. Uh, so, uh, but I think you've got to look at it from, from the average citizen in Mont Eagle's, uh, eyes. I can understand where she would think, there's nothing wrong, that building is there, Ray Summer built it, uh, forty years ago, and then, uh, after he died, his wife, Suzie, uh, left it to her, and, and sounded like a splendid idea, I'm just going to build a bathroom, and I'm sure it was a slab, I'm assuming, and probably wasn't it early?
It was, I don't-
Oh, you didn't go look, you, okay, so, in all likelihood, it was a slab, uh, not a crawl space, uh, on, on the bathroom. But, but I completely understand from their eyes and others, the problems that they see. And that's not saying that that's the planning commission's fault, or Anya's, or anybody else's, but that is the problem. And it's up to you guys to find a solution, that's what you're there for. And, and, uh, from a developer standpoint, and I'm technically not a developer, I just fiddle with little projects, uh, but the big developers, they understand this real well. And, and they will try to push the envelope as far as they can to get whatever, they'll, they'll come feel y'all out, see how professional you are, and, and what you're willing to do, and in the past, the planning commissions have given up things and not enforced things, and looked the other way because they wanted the project. Or they just didn't, uh, understand what they needed to be done, it might not have been intentional. Uh, but that was then, and, and you guys are trying to, trying to correct that. And, and the reason I came up here, uh, is I wanted, for the record, to present, uh, a minor subdivision project I've got, and, and, uh, I want that for the record, if they will be, that's what I submitted Friday.
I sent this to them already today afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I submitted that Friday, and I didn't expect to get anything this soon, uh, so, but I just sent it to Anya, uh, and said, I think I said, uh, I'm considering sub, minor subdivision, uh, please review or comment or something. Anyway, today, I got this, and it has, uh, five or six, so I don't have a vice, so you can count the red lines there. Yeah, it's got some deficiencies there, and, and they're legitimate, uh, and, and I'm not here to complain. What I'm here for is to tell you, the last minor subdivision I was here on, it took me six months to get y'all to, for it to go to the city council. Uh, and, and that was, uh, and you weren't here, I don't think, I only did that time. But, uh, there was excuses, I had problems with, with, I felt like the planners, uh, changing for, uh, one month, there was two deficiencies or three, the next month, there was new ones. Uh, and, and, and that wasn't on the planning commission, I think that was on the planning office. But anyway, we finally got, got that battle done. Well, I asked that y'all look at minor subdivisions, and you did, and you came up with, with some, some changes, and, and I'm happy to report that, that, uh, I think what you did on that is working, because as I said, I submitted for review on Friday, I got, uh, the response today, and I have forwarded that to my, uh, surveyor to make those corrections, and then I'll send it back, and, uh, assuming those are made, I will not get another email saying there's an additional problem over here somewhere else. As, as I told y'all, uh, I think it should be like an electrical inspection, when you get an electrical inspection, they cite the deficiencies, and, and then you have reinspection, and they look at those deficiencies, they don't start A to Z again. And, and, and so, I, I have every reason to believe that when my surveyor makes those corrections and I send that back, that I'm, shortly, I'm going to have staff approval for a minor subdivision, and that's how it's supposed to work. So, I think you're making progress, uh, on minor subdivisions. And, and, I, I come up here a lot and gripe and complain, so I felt like I should come up here-
I, I just started to say, are you giving us a comment?
Yes, I am, uh, but, but that doesn't take away from the problems you got either, now.
No.
And, and, and so, anyway, I, I wanted that entered for the record to show, uh, that, that, uh, hopefully, in midstream, I have high expectations that you have, have made corrections, and you're more user friendly. The biggest complaint from contractors and small developers is it's harder to deal with the Mont Eagle Planning Commission, this is in the past, uh, and the, and the planners than it is, I've done work in Chattanooga, or Murphysboro, or wherever they say. And they may be lying, I don't know, but, but they complain that it's not user friendly here. And, 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 uh, and I'm sure some of it's probably justified, and some of it isn't. Uh, but I really feel like you guys are trying to do, uh, the right thing, and, and then the worst news I've heard, uh, was, was while ago, when Earl said he was retiring. Is that, Susan?
But, well, I'm, uh, I've got two more planning commission meetings, just let it that way.
Well, you know, I think you're going to have a big problem after two more planning commission meetings. And, and, uh, Earl's been here, uh, I think he's done a great job, uh, he, he's, you know, I've dealt with him sometimes, I've come, he would say, this is a deficiency, or you can't approve this, or I got to give you another shutdown, or what, but he's done his job, he's knowledgeable, he's done his job. And, and, uh, Earl, thank you for, for being a professional, and, and dealing with me over the years, but it's going to be critical that your next person have qualifications that that man has, or you're going to have a whole lot more problems than you got now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, so-
I agree a hundred percent.
Uh, and then what are you going to do in the interim? You know, what, well, we don't have anybody, we can't get that approved, or, you know, you're just going to approve everything, uh, what are you going to do?
I guess you're going to school.
Uh, and, and, but, I mean, I see a big pro, a, a much bigger problem in two planning commission meetings than you guys have had since you've been here.
I agree.
Uh-
This could be big learning for whoever does come into this.
Yeah.
It was for me for a year.
Yeah.
Earl, who is taking over for you?
I do not know what Mont Eagle needs to do yet, but, uh-
When did you turn in your stuff, or didn't you yet?
When did I turn my notice in? Probably two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know you guys don't do that, I know, but, but still.
Marilyn has a plan, and she's going to go over with the city council, and she, I've already talked to y'all some of that, no?
First I've heard of it. Well, anyway, I want to thank the planning commission for, uh, the listening, I used to think you listened and didn't do anything, but, but, uh, I, I don't think that's the case, and, and so, I felt like I needed, I was obligated to come up here and, and give you some good news. And again, thank you, Earl, for your professionalism over the years, and, and, uh, I appreciate that. And, and, you know, I think we all have the same, uh, mission, that, that we want to make Mont Eagle a better, a better place. Uh, but how you do that, there's, there are different ways, and, and I read in the messenger, we're going to hire ten thousand dollars for a consultant or something to, uh, tell us what we need to do. And, and, and so, you know, I was, I was amazed to think that of all the information that's available, uh, basically on Google, uh, that we're going to pay ten thousand dollars for somebody to tell us, uh, what we need to do for the town of Mont Eagle's future, uh, when it's kind of common sense as far as what your options are, and, and, uh, then sometimes people do feasibility studies and, and hire consultants to do that because they're going to shove something down your throat, and they're going to use the consultant and the feasibility report to justify what you're going to do. And, 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 you know, people are smarter than that, but so, sometimes you just waste your money, uh, hiring a consultant, depending on what the consultant, uh, you know, whether it's an engineer, or just a plan, economic plan, or a vision, or emissions plan, or whatever it is. But, uh, anyway, uh, I, I think that the people in town of Mont Eagle are smart enough to figure all that out, and, and you can spend ten thousand or a hundred thousand, but you, it, it's basically the same, uh, same mode of motivation, I think. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Go ahead.
Thank you, um, my name's Mary Beth Best, and I live at five twenty-one Lots and Hazer, like, right over there. And, um, my dad, uh, just passed away during that, um, he used to have a saying, he'd say, honey, sometimes you're just a day late and a dollar short. And I might be, but I did feel compelled to come here tonight, I'm not going to be able to be at the city council meeting, I've been kind of M I A for a while, a lot of things going on, but this is important to me, y'all seen my face before, and you know it is, I'm very passionate about this, you're new, but you can watch the recordings of my appearances here. Um, uh, I wanted to come here today, and I wanted to, um, I did want to thank, uh, thank you guys for the service that you do. Um, eighteen years ago, I served on a planning commission that, that started with three people and an idea, and we built a playground, a twenty acre playground from, uh, donated piece of property in Pleasantview, Tennessee, that was nothing but a cow pasture. And it stands today, it was six soccer fields and, and all this wonderful stuff, and my kids didn't even get to play on it. But it was so exciting to be a part of what you're doing. And I go back there, some, every once in a while, we'll make the, the trek back there, and driving through there, I realize that what we did was important. And what I want to say to you today is what you do here is really important. And, um, I, I'm going to read this from the developer's quick reference, it's just a segment that I've read to you before, but part of your mission is that every effort has been made to preserve individual property rights while also protecting other citizens and businesses from unsafe and incompatible land uses. I mean, that's heavy, that's really heavy. Um, we've stood here before, we've had attorneys, we've had notebooks, we've had research, um, and, uh, we stood up here and we tried to caution you all about site plans, land use, about zoning. I, I've read, I've watched the meetings, I've read the paper, even though I haven't been here, but I've tried to keep up to speed on some things. And I know Mr. Provis has, has brought up the idea of spot zoning and things like that, and, and the danger of doing that. Um, I think we're seeing some of that happening, and seeing some of the things happening because of some things that maybe we didn't look too, too closely at. I know I stood in this meeting before, um, when we talked about T D A C permit, stormwater runoff. And I know that Mr. Black and Mary Jane Bradley Flowers particularly asked a lot of questions about that. So, what I'm talking about is the R B T development site, if you haven't guessed already. Um, it's close to my home, uh, and this past weekend, I don't know if you saw the pictures, but I'm going to give you some. I wanted to give you the courtesy of knowing a complaint that I issued to the city council, that they'll hopefully be looking at and taking a look at what we can do to maybe salvage, uh, maybe save the town from some really, really dangerous situations that are before us. But what I wanted to point out today is what you do is critical. You do make recommendations, you know, I know the vote goes to the council, but your recommendations are, are, are very important, they're influential. The council depends on you to do the studies, they depend on you to do the research, to ask the questions. You know, they depend on you to know that you're making a recommenda, recommendation in good faith. We tried to tell you that the T D A C permit was only for construction and stormwater runoff. We tried to tell you at that time that that, that development site had been out of compliance more than it had been in compliance. At this time, it's public information, any of you can go on there and look at it, they have been out of compliance close to ninety percent of the time that they've held a permit, and they have not even started construction yet. That's why what you do matters. Please, take time, do what, do your due diligence from this point on. I don't know if we're a day late and a dollar short at this point, we very well could be in terms of what this commission can do. I hope the council will be brave and courageous and wise, um, and make some good decisions, um, based on these complaints, I know I'm not the only one that did that. But you can see the pictures here, um, this is site plan stuff. This is stuff that you've talked about tonight. This is runoff, this is flooding that covered Sancley Road because the site plan was not done properly. We had some research done by an engineer, a professional, that we presented to you, we, we weren't just complaining. You know, we were trying to present re, thoroughly researched information, and what he warned us about happened Saturday. It busted through, it flooded Sancley, couldn't even see the road, it went down to the post office, and it was actually tracked all the way to Laurel Lake, I mean, we've traced it. It does its own diatest, look, I'm not the expert, I, I'm just looking at the pictures. I don't, I, I, I just trust the experts. When I was on that planning commission, all I knew is I had two little wild little boys that needed to climb on stuff, and ride skateboards, and, and play football, you know? Let, let's give them a place to do that. We listened to the experts that showed us how to do that safely and long-term, and twenty years later, it's still there. That's what we're trying to do here, we're trying to create a situation that's long-lasting for everybody, for generations to come. So, I'm going to leave you with my email, with the photographs I sent to the city council, Maroon's already gotten it, Nate and I talked a little bit about it. And I'm also going to leave you with this, just a reminder, when you come here, I know you're vomiting tears, I know that you, you give a lot of time here, remember what you do is important, I know what you do is important, that's why I come here, that's why I drive you crazy, that's why I get passionate. Uh, sometimes I get mad, because it matters to me, I love this place, I love this town, I love my home, and, um, and that's why, that's why I say the things I do and do the things I do, so, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's why the decisions are always so long and hard. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Beth. Anybody else that wants to? Jim, go ahead. Thank you.
I'm very, very glad this, uh, these statements have covered a lot of my concerns. To give each of you a letter that I had prepared here, it's a request, let's see, I don't think it has to have been, keep it to myself. What it is, I'm requesting that when the R B T enterprise is, also known as the, um, Petro Mont Eagle Project is resubmitted for approval by this commission, that serious consideration be given to the reference hydrological study which I did on that property, based on the Sadler and Associates drawings which were submitted to this commission previously. There is possibility that Sadler and Associates will, on the basis of my hydrological study, change the S W P P, uh, Stormwater Pollution Protection, uh, Program-
Protection, uh, program, uh, to accommodate that hydrological study, and not allow, um, pollutants from the paved and, um, fueling station, uh, operation to pollute Laurel Lake and our water supply, uh, as Mary Beth pointed out, the last year and a half, the runoff from the RBT operation up there where they've been doing earthwork, has polluted the water supply, silt, mud, and other contaminants, debris, and it's evident in the photography, which I have in this folder, and you've received from Mary Beth, uh, we have complained to TDEC on numerous occasions about the water in Laurel Lake being polluted, and we're right, quite frankly, getting a runaround from a state office, and we are pretty non cussed about that, we don't, I do not feel, and the people I talk to do not feel, that this town can rely on TDEC's opinion in the competency of a plat to protect the water supply of a town of this size, that's a harsh indictment of a state agency, and I'll be honest with you, having spoken with the director, and people he is appointed to, uh, here are complaints, I feel that, uh, TDEC is, uh, not doing what its mission account, says it should do, so therefore, I call on this commission to protect this town's water supply, when you review the RBT or Petro Mont Eagle site plans, and rely on at least mine or other professional judgments, as to whether we are protected, and that this will not come back to cause the citizens of Mont Eagle some enormous expense to do the things which are required by the ordinance for this type of development, particularly this development, uh, which is stated in ordinance section one thousand Q, which states that the developer shall provide the means of containment and treatment of rainwater runoff from their property, and we've had an enormous amount out here that's invisible to any citizen, so I ask your indulgence to, to really look into this thing, don't let, let it go by, uh, when I take into serious consideration the effect on the water supply, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have one to be heard? Okay, I need a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, see you guys.
Thank you, well, I, I understand, I understand where you're at, but I'd rather have you coming behind.
Um, Peter Basely and Marilyn Wagner.
That'd be a lot of...
I only have one hobby that you promised, I've got this one.
Yeah, but, no, and folks on the ad line, you know, we're going to come up and say, well, we don't think anybody's doing it, or if they do, they don't know what they're talking about. I know, but what...